... o'clock, I'm going to call a meeting to order. And roll call.
Mr. Mauer.
Here.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Breeden.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Ms. Stevens.
Here.
Five eyes, we have a quorum.
Okay. Okay, please stand for the pledge allegiance and, um... Mr. Bell, can I ask you to lead us in the pledge? Since I can't call you sergeant.
Sergeant.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment, please.
Shall we bow and pray? Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for the hearts of the men and women that are here today, the community that is represented in your love. Father, as we gather together, we seek your wisdom, your guidance, your direction in all that we do, Father. In this, we will give you praise, glory, and honor. This we ask. Shall we all say amen?
Amen.
Please be seated. Okay, we are... We don't have a city attorney's report because we had no closed session. Correct?
Correct.
Pardon me? I'm sorry. Approve the agenda. Uh, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Please vote. Oh, that's right. I'm sorry, I can't remember this. One is yes, right?
It may not work.
It's not up there. Uh-oh.
I think what happened was he moved past it because you... So he's having to restart it because you went to the invocation and everything and changed the slide. So he's restarting it.
Okay.
So let me just go ahead and do a voice vote. Mr. Mauer.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Breeden.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Ms. Stevens.
Aye.
Five eyes, motion carries.
Okay. Thank you for pointing out I had skipped that item. We don't have an attorney's report. So if you all join us to the podium, we have some pretty special awards.
Is the mic on? Great. All right, I get the great pleasure of presenting my friend, Ron Bell, with a plaque this evening in memory... Uh, memory, in celebration. There's something to that memory thing. He's, uh... He's, uh... Wants to still be a cop, but he needs to retire. But Ron started with Ridgecrest Police Department 30 years ago. He spent a couple of years with us, and then went on to California City. He worked there for about 19 years, rose to the rank of lieutenant. And we were fortunate enough to get him back. I hired him back. He was my utility guy. He worked every assignment in the department over the last six years. Traffic, patrol, detectives, you name it, he worked it for us. Ron's had a wonderful career. He has his wife Brenda here tonight, and his son Ryan. Daughter Julianne, father-in-law Bill, Mary. Bill used to be the chief of police from Cal City Police Department, been retired for numerous years. Bill had a wonderful career. I spent a lot of time working a lot of cases with him. We worked narcotics for several years. We still, I think, have the most narcotic arrests on a... On an operation that happened several years ago that we worked with DEA. We had a great time on it. But he's a good guy. I'm glad that he made your 30 years. You've earned it. Now, Bell tonight, in memory, he's wearing his original gun that he started the job with 30 years ago. And the funny part is, is it still has the same bullets in it. Most people will recognize his gun because it's a revolver and has speed loaders. And I don't even know if you can get the bullets out of that speed loader because they're... I think they're... Yeah, they're kind of rusted in there. So Ron, why don't you come up here really quick? We got your crystal plaque that states Sergeant Ron Bell upon retirement and recognition of 30 years of service in law enforcement, and the watch date, March 1st, 2018. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ron. Am I expected to say anything?
Yes, sir.
Think the greatest fear that a chief of police would have or a city manager would have would be Ron Bell with an open mic. Is Officer Campito here? No, he's my partner in traffic, and he always wondered if I winged everything. And I said, "Well, yes, I do." I had a really interesting emotion as I came over here. When I first swore to be an as a police officer at Riverside Sheriff's Department, where I graduated the academy, put that shield on, you have that weight. You've never had that feeling before. It's probably the last time I'm going to wear my Class A as we were coming over here and went to Ryan's to get the camera, and Brenda's driving. I had that same feeling of that weight of the shield on my chest. Only those wearing the uniform will know what it's like to be a peace officer. You can read all kinds of books. You can watch TV. You can watch movies. But you really don't know what it's like until you put that shield on and you're a peace officer. So I have some thanks to give. Number one, thank God that I will be done. And my guardian angel, because Ron and I have done some interesting things in our career. Second, there's a lady right there with a halo over her head. That's my lovely wife of 36 years. And she got me through that career. Four beautiful children, grandchildren. She's an excellent person. She's the one that got me through it. Third, is everybody else standing there in uniform. You cannot do it without partnerships. And every single one of you, with the exception of... Who's under 30 up there? My belt is older than you. You guys are great. Can't do... You can't go through this career without working with the excellent people like you. And only peace officers would know that. So with that, thank you. I'm sure I'll see you all in the epicenter of Ridgecrest, which is Walmart sometime or another. Say hi and thanks again. Thanks, Ron.
My first pride along was with... Thank you.
You were here already.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was really old, isn't he? Yeah.
Thank you, Ron.
You're welcome.
Good evening. I'm Captain Maroni. Tonight, I have the honor of recognizing some of our officers and a dispatcher for life-saving efforts. So we'll start with Officers Barragon and Gomez. If you'd come down here, please. On 11/27/17, Officers Barragon and Gomez were dispatched to report of a male subject not breathing. Upon their arrival, the officers began to assess the situation and determine the male subject required life-saving measures as he had no pulse and was not breathing. Officer Barragon and Officer Gomez hooked an AED up to the subject and began CPR. As a result of the CPR, they were able to obtain a pulse. The subject was transported to Ridgecrest Regional Hospital by Liberty Ambulance. According to R.R.H.E.R. staff, the patient survived. Due to Officer Barragon and Officer Gomez's calm demeanor, fluent teamwork, and quick action, a life was saved. Therefore, they are to be commended for their outstanding life-saving efforts during this medical aid call. Do you guys want to say anything? I have to offer it.
No.
No?
Thank you so much. Job well done. Thank you.
Officer Eric Clinton. On 12/20/17, officers were dispatched to report of an unresponsive baby that had drowned. The baby's older brother had found him unresponsive in the swimming pool. Upon arrival, Officer Clinton noticed that the mother revived the baby with CPR and was cradling him. The baby was aspirating. Officer Clinton recognized what was happening and held the baby so that his head and face were positioned downward. In doing this, it allowed the baby to clear his airway and lungs of fluid. Officer Clinton held the baby in this position until paramedics arrived and transported the baby to the ER. According to the doctor, Officer Clinton helped save the baby's life by his actions and prevented further injury to the child. He performed under a stressful situation and should be recognized for his efforts. Therefore, he is commended for his outstanding performance that resulted in a life being saved. Want to say anything? You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Officer Estrada and dispatcher Moran. On 1/9/18, dispatcher Moran received a 911 call requesting medical assistance. The reporting party advised that her uncle had been sick for approximately a week, and his health had taken a turn for the worse. The reporting party also advised that the uncle was having difficulty breathing, and his skin was starting to turn yellow. Recognizing the severity of the situation, dispatcher Moran elected to dispatch an officer to the address while the reporting party was still speaking with a medical dispatcher. Several moments later, Officer Estrada arrived on scene. He entered the residence and found that the subject was in a much worse state than previously reported. The subject was not breathing on his own, and Officer Estrada was unable to locate a pulse. He immediately began CPR in an attempt to resuscitate the subject. Officer Estrada performed CPR without assistance for five to 10 minutes, which is a very long time, until paramedics got on scene. Once paramedics were on scene, Officer Estrada integrated with EMS to continue the life-saving actions. He and the paramedics continued cycles of CPR until a pulse and respirations were restored. Once the subject was stabilized, he was transported to the ER. Due to dispatcher Moran's quick recognition of the gravity of the situation and Officer Estrada's actions, the subject would not likely have made it to the hospital. Therefore, they are commended for their actions that directly resulted in the preservation of another person's life. Do you guys want to say anything? That's all I have.
We want to get a picture of everybody together. So y'all come on. I have an award that's not on the agenda, so Brown Act people, I'm sorry, but I'm going to do it anyhow. There was a Ridge Project served over 400 Brits and Italians last Saturday. And Ron, if you would come up here. They asked me to give you this patch and thank you for all the help you did when they were here. They're going to be here for a long time. You're going to see them around town. Please welcome them. And the city council, if you would come forward. This is a picture of the planes they came in and the information. And they're thanking the mayor and the city council for all their support with gratitude. And they ate a lot of hamburgers and hot dogs. It was great fun. So, to all of you, thank you. Thank you. I just have to say, we have an amazing police department. I am so proud of all of them. You make our lives wonderful. Thank you. And thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on any item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Public comment section of the agenda. For a total of one hour, each speaker is asked to identify his or herself. Public comment, please.
Yes, Mike Neilman, hand this to the city clerk to distribute. So what you're going to get is a portion of what I believe I've already sent to the entire council, but thought I would provide you this so that you can listen along as I go through it. What this has to do with is the upcoming proposed Parks and Recs tax assessment on the property owners of Ridgecrest. This was presented first on December the 20th, I believe. What a time to present such a thing. Guaranteed minimum attendance by the citizenry right before Christmas. Since that time, I have addressed portions of this. I have requested both at Parks and Recs Committee and at the last council meeting that due to the amount of the monies being looked at and the fact that we're proposing putting yet another tax on our citizens in the face of upcoming future fees and taxes, two which I could think of right offhand that might be fairly sizable. But yeah, we don't see anything about this on the agenda. So I'm going to conduct my own four-minute, looks like, or less, citizen review of this. And I'm just going to address what was presented as the wish list. I'm going to call it for Freedom Park, Upjohn Park, and Pearson Park. And as you can see, I've got two columns there. One of what labeled what I say looks like a want. And the other one, what I think probably, you know, is a justifiable need. So for Freedom Park, under justifiable needs, basically, we've got stuff for taking care of the grass, a gazebo repair of $10,000. And I'm familiar with Freedom Park, and I'd have to seriously doubt $10,000 to repair that gazebo. I've gone and looked at it myself. There's just a little bit of exterior rust on some of the columns, maybe the roofing, possibly. $75,000 for well repair. What I would have to say, and I'm surprised the council has not asked this question yet, is where's the cost estimate? Where do you come up with $75,000? That's a lot of money. So I questioned those, although I don't doubt that those probably need to be done. What looks to me like just wants, things that thought, oh, I'd just love to have this. It would make it much nicer, and so forth and so on. $200,000 for a bathroom. Now, for Freedom Park, maybe, even though you have bathrooms close. But this is reminiscent of the $600 per square foot bathroom that was put in at the Kerr McGee Ball Field. $300,000 for that one. That already had plumbing in place, of course, but as still yet, $200,000 for a bathroom. And we've been doing it for a long time without a bathroom out there, so why do we need that? The fountain, well, I've been there for a long time because of the water overall situation and the look of pumping a fountain up in the air continuously around here. But I just get rid of that so that $5,000 goes away. So what looks like wants here is $200,000, and needs are maybe 93. For Upjohn Park, you got a similar situation here, except, of course, they want to add more equipment. Are you kidding me? To that park, $250,000. We just spent about $250,000 replacing playground equipment at that park. And in my opinion, I went and inspected it. It looked like it just needed repair, not replacement. But we did that. And they want to add... They want to double it? And these parks are not that big. They're going to take up a whole bunch more of the playground, playtime space, the free space, the open space. And where's the need? Where's the justification for that? And $30,000 for more shade structures? Well, maybe, but, you know, we've been fine with what we got there. $5,000 for security cameras? Really? I mean, I don't understand that. I really don't understand that. So on that list, we got $300,000 of wants and $11,000, what looks like actual need. You can see a lot of difference there. Running out of time here. So the same kind of things go for Pearson. Another 250 for playground equipment, another $200,000 for a bathroom, another $5,000 for security cameras there. Same kind of stuff. And the other things that are justifiable, except, of course, a high, what I think very high estimate, $70,000 of well repair, which we have seen no contractor cost estimate. There you go, $500,000 versus maybe 82. The sum total is you got $1 million of want here and maybe 183,000 of justifiable need. We should be having these discussions at the heft of the council, but as are not, I'm doing it here tonight.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, next, please.
Stan Ratora. I'd like to follow up on the same subject that Mr. Neal just addressed in a slightly different direction. My feeling is that this council, as well as every other agency in this valley, needs to start looking at the big picture. We've got two big issues on the horizon coming up that are actually needed. One of those, obviously, is the groundwater authority, the need to pay for the GSP, as well as the follow-on mitigation of our water situation. That's a real need. And hopefully, everybody can distinguish between a real need and something you'd just like to have. The like... You know, the things you'd like to have. If we had lots of money, we could afford them. We should have them. But quite frankly, we have to set priorities, and that's the fact of life. And that's what we've been living in the last 20 years. The other thing that's coming up, and it's going to be before one of the committees fairly quickly, is we've been hearing for 10 years the problems with CalPERS. We still don't know what the issues with CalPERS is, how it's going to affect us, how bad it's going to be. But those are two big, major needs that are on the horizon. And I think from a big-picture standpoint, this agency needs to be talking to and coordinating and cooperating with all of the other agencies in town because everybody is asking for more money. And there's a limit to how much money can come out of the taxpayers' pockets. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Dave Matthews, address is on file. I second what Stan and Mike have said. There's various states around the country where it is said that people are voting by their feet. That is, where they're overtaxed, they get up and walk away. Go somewhere else where they can survive. And I caution the people of California, that is been happening here. You better wake up and open your eyes. Now, the main thing that I came up here for is that I have to take a certain councilman to task. Mr. Thomas, at the last meeting, you sat up there and told me and several other people that we needed to send you bouquets of flowers for Valentine's Day. Well, I sat up almost until midnight, working feverishly to find a bouquet to send you, but you never acknowledged it. So don't ask me to send you flowers next year.
I gave him flowers, though. I mean candy at the economic development. So he had... But he did acknowledge mine very good. So, yeah, he did.
Well, maybe yours were better than mine.
No, no, they weren't. They...
Anyway, I'd just like to point out one other thing. Some of you may have read in the paper that the Knights of Columbus Bingo Crew two Sundays ago was robbed at gunpoint. We've never had that happen before, and I hope we don't have it happen again. However, in the transition to apprehending the culprits, I think the police department is making some good progress. And I just wanted to point out that we have already taken procedural changes, and we are going to... We're looking into further changes. So anybody that wants to play bingo on Sunday night, come on down. We're still there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Okay, we will close public comment, and we will go into council announcements. Mike?
I have none.
Lindsay? Just want to remind you of a couple of things coming up. Tomorrow is the Economic Outlook Conference. It's going to be held here. We have a number of speakers to talk about economic development in this community, both the... Including a special speaker, which, I'm sorry to say, I don't have my paper in front of me, so I can't tell you. So obviously, he's so good that I can't remember his name. So my apology to this person. But we also have the admiral and the captain and the technical director, as well as a number of other officials going to speak. So I invite you to come tomorrow. I also want to let you know that I've got a notice from the California Public Utilities Commission that there's going to be an upcoming rate increase for Southern California Edison. And there's going to be hearings on March 19th in Long Beach, March 20th in Claremont, March 21st in Fontana, and March 26th in Visalia. If you want information on that public hearing increase, So those are information. Please follow up with that. If you want to make comments, it's real easy to bitch afterwards, but it's more important that you speak up at that time. And we know everybody in our city speaks up, so I hope that some of you attend that and come back with good information for the rest of us. Okay, is there any other council announcements? Okay, we will go on to the consent calendar. Proposed action to approve draft minutes of the City of Ridgecrest City Council Successor Redevelopment Agency Financing Authority, Housing Authority Regular Meeting dated February 7th, 2018. And number four, proposed action to approve a resolution authorizing submission of the fiscal year 2017-18 transportation development. Article four, claim to the current council of governments. Is there anyone here that would like to have any of those items pulled from the consent calendar? Is there any public who would like to have any of those items pulled from the consent calendar? Okay, motion to approve. So moved.
Excuse me, if I may. Madam Mayor, I think the city clerk had a change to the minutes.
I'm sorry. I didn't know that.
No, it's okay. I neglected to speak up. I'm sorry. We're going to add to the bottom of that, the report out of closed session. I sent that after the posting of the agenda. So I'm going to add some items to the bottom, and it's going to be... Excuse me. So for the conference with legal counsel, one of the cases, it's... You guys had discussion, and no final action was taken. And that's going to be noted in the minutes. And on the other one, it was the potential litigation, and council directed the city manager to pay the claim for the exact amount of 212.64. So that's just going to be stated on the minutes in addition to what's already there.
Okay, would you like to amend your motion and second?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, now, motion and second vote. Are we ready to vote on here?
I don't know if it's going to work. Nope.
Mr. Mauer.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Breeden.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Ms. Stevens.
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, the next item is city managers bringing it to us, proposed action to approve a resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council to enter the First Amendment to the Solid Waste Franchise Agreement with Waste Management to establish an ordinance waste recycling program pursuant to AB eighteen twenty-six. Sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, I have with me Josh Mann from Waste Management. He's a manager there, as well as our solid waste consultant, Rob Hilton from HF and H Consultants. He's the president of the company. What we're here tonight is to request the council to approve the First Amendment of our Solid Waste Franchise Agreement with Waste Management, establishing an organics waste recycling program within the city of Ridgecrest. In October of two thousand and fourteen, Governor Brown signed Assembly Bill eighteen twenty-six, which mandated all local jurisdictions across the state to implement an organic waste program, to divert organic waste generated by businesses and multifamily dwellings of five units or more. We should have had a program on the ground running April first of two thousand and sixteen. However, we began working on this program in two thousand and fifteen. Initially, it was extremely cost prohibitive, because at first, the only site in Kern County that would accept our organic waste was in Mojave, which really raised the rates considerably with the number of required customers, or commercial or multifamily resident businesses required to do it. Over that interim, we were able to get Kern County Waste Management to allow us to, or Waste Management to dispose of the organic waste products in our local landfill. And with that, we were able to reduce the costs of implementing this program substantially. We've also come up with a way of smoothing the cost of the program over all the commercial and multifamily customers and Waste Management, so we can reduce the cost enough to be able to implement a program that will actually be acceptable by CalRecycle. So I have with me tonight, before I go any further, is Mr. Hilton. He has a PowerPoint presentation that he's going to walk through, and then we'll have Mr. Mann here for additional questions regarding the program, as well as myself, and then we can go from there.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Glad to be here with you tonight. As the city manager indicated, we've been working on this program for about three years now, and we're glad that we're bringing it to you in the shape that it is, rather than the shape that it was. So I'm going to walk through quickly why we're talking about this, and what the drivers for it are, and then Josh will come up and talk a bit about how Waste Management will provide the service, how they'll do the outreach, what that looks like to the customers, and then I'll wrap up with a quick summary of the business terms of the proposed amendment that's in front of you. So we are on a path in California that started with AB thirty-two and the climate change initiative that California took on, and has resulted in all sorts of requirements and mandates on local government and on businesses in California. In the solid waste sphere, there's not a lot of difference. There are some focus areas for the state where they believe that recycling and landfill avoidance will help with climate mitigation. So in two thousand and twelve, they passed their first mandatory recycling law statewide, and actually, because of where you were in your compliance order process with CalRecycle, we had actually anticipated the requirements of AB three forty-one for mandatory recycling back in two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven, when we were negotiating the agreement with Waste Management. So you were already into a mandatory recycling program for your businesses and your multifamily properties. We were providing a program, we were doing education and outreach, all the things that we needed to do, and you were ahead. Then in two thousand and fourteen, they adopted AB eighteen twenty-six, which took that concept of mandatory recycling and applied it to organic materials, yard trimmings and food scraps. And they said by April of two thousand and sixteen, you needed to have a program available to all of your businesses and multifamily properties for those covered materials. Then in two thousand and sixteen, they passed yet another law, SB thirteen eighty-three, that will increase those requirements again, and the effective date of that is January two thousand and twenty-two. So what we're asking you to approve tonight is really a bridge strategy between where we were and where you'll ultimately be in two thousand and twenty-two. Very specifically, this gets you into compliance with AB eighteen twenty-six. It provides organic service, food scrap recovery service, to businesses and multifamily properties in town that are required to comply. It also covers education, outreach, monitoring, and enforcement around those activities for our reporting to CalRecycle. Again, CalRecycle regulates the city's activity around this and makes sure that you have a program, and if you don't have a program, the fine comes to the city. So we began investigating this as soon as we knew about it in two thousand and fifteen. In the law, there were provisions that said if you have barriers that prevent your ability to implement a program, CalRecycle can make accommodations for a period of time. As Ron indicated, our barrier was cost effectiveness. You're a good distance from the closest composting facility. And so CalRecycle was willing to delay implementation for Ridgecrest as long as we were proceeding in good faith, which we were. Ultimately, we were able to make a breakthrough with the county, where they were, they'll be a partner in this, receiving the organics at the Ridgecrest landfill, and then the county will incur the cost of transporting that into Bakersfield to be handled. So really, the county kind of came to the table and incurred some costs on behalf of the system here. If you do not take action, CalRecycle has indicated that they intend to start compliance order processes for any agencies that haven't got a program up and running by July of this year. So this is sort of the time where the accommodations are over, and they want to see programs on the ground working. So with that, I'll turn it over to Josh to talk about how that's going to work.
Thank you, Rob. Yes, as Rob mentioned, the law has been in effect for a few years now, so we're playing a little bit of catch-up, and to ensure that we are basically entering at the right opportune time to meet the next threshold, our proposed service approach starts with the two thousand and nineteen threshold of four cubic yards of solid waste generated per week. And through our analysis, that currently pertains to a hundred and seven businesses and multifamily properties here in the city of Ridgecrest. So this program will be encompassing of those generators, again, at the four cubic yards of solid waste per week. This will be an automatic service, so the idea is that you would get it included with your trash service, and for you to not participate, i.e. not be compliant with the law, that you would have to opt out of that. So we're working towards ensuring maximum compliance with the law for all those businesses that are affected. Initially, what we're proposing here would be a once-per-week collection that is done to minimize the financial impact of implementing the additional service. As part of that collection, customers will be able to get up to two sixty-four gallon carts, obviously, no additional charge with their regular service cost. People ask why sixty-four gallon carts? Food waste, most of the time, contains a lot of water weight, it gets very, very heavy. So from a standpoint of both the safety of the users, safety of our drivers that are servicing the containers, as well as the portability of the material, it really makes sense to start with sixty-four gallon carts. It also allows you to scale up. We know that most businesses are not going to be able to capture all of their organic waste the first day out they start using the service, and this allows them to add additional carts, obviously, as you can see, at an additional thirteen dollars and forty-three cents per month, as needed. As Rob indicated, we want to really thank the county for coming to the table and allowing us to be able to tip that material here locally at the Ridgecrest landfill. Saves us a lot of travel time, which obviously gets very, very costly with heavy material. And the organic waste that we do collect will ultimately be taken to the county's Mount Vernon facility for composting. So that way, you know that the material does get diverted from the landfill. In terms of how we're going to implement this, a lot of people have had questions. I'm not even sure really what organic waste is. I don't know how I generate it here in my business. I'm not sure how I'm going to use the service. We've taken all that into consideration as part of our implementation plan. Initially, we do want to start with a customer survey and letter to all of those affected businesses, just to gauge their awareness of what the law requires, and potentially any of their efforts that they may be complying with through, say, a backhauling service or onsite composting. From there, from that, we'll move into a phase where we're going to do some outreach with an introductory workshop. We really want the businesses and multifamily property owners and managers to really have a hands-on opportunity to see what the sixty-four gallon cart looks like, ask their questions about how the service would work for their business, potentially arrange that early site visit, so that we can come out and actually walk their facility with them to explain how they might be able to utilize the service best. We will ultimately get to face-to-face contact with all a hundred and seven of those identified businesses and multifamily properties, plus any additional participants that would like to request a site visit. And from a standpoint of ensuring that they're aware of what the law requires, they will be asked to sign an acknowledgement that they understand what the law requires and how they can comply. So that's our implementation plan from a standpoint of education and outreach. What the schedule looks like on that, obviously, we're looking for your approval here tonight. We would subsequently order equipment, and we've actually already gone ahead and done that, knowing that it is the law, we're going to have to move quickly to ensure that we can avoid any sort of issues with state compliance. Obviously, following the approval of the program, we want to start with some customer education, get that approved by the city for distribution to businesses and multifamily properties. We would finalize the collection schedule with the county to ensure that we're utilizing their time and facilities appropriately, considering they've really come to the table on this. And then we would start our customer site visits, which many of you have had a site visit, if you're a business owner or multifamily property manager, from Chip Holloway, who's done a lot of our recycling site visits. He would start visiting specifically on behalf of talking about organics. We would have our introductory workshop, and then hopefully, begin collection in June. So, and then from that point on, the law requires that we do follow up and monitoring to ensure that people are, the affected businesses and multifamily properties are utilizing the service properly, maximizing their diversion efforts, and then noting any issues to the contrary. So that's really what we look forward to over the next couple of months, and appreciate the city's support.
All right. So what you have in front of you tonight for your approval is an amendment to your franchise agreement with Waste Management, and it does a few things. First, it extends the term of the contract to the end of two thousand and twenty-one, and that puts us on the doorstep of that next pretty significant piece of legislation, SB thirteen eighty-three, and allows the city time to plan for those things. The extension also allows Waste Management time to amortize some of the startup costs around the program, like buying that new equipment, the vehicles and such. In the amendment, you'll notice that it establishes the implementation program that Josh talked about, the operating requirements, the education and outreach, and complies with the requirements of the law for the city. Rate adjustment comes with that for commercial and multifamily customers. They will see a seven and a half percent roughly rate increase to fund the program. Again, we focused that on the customers that have to comply with eighteen twenty-six, the commercial and multifamily customers. Residential rates will not be increased by that seven point five five percent. Duplex and triplex rates, same thing. So that funds the program and provides that. We also benchmarked Waste Management's financial proposal on this, their costs of providing the service, and they're actually doing this as efficiently or more efficiently than the base services that they proposed back in two thousand and eleven. And they do benchmark favorably against other jurisdictions who frankly should have more favorable conditions for this than Ridgecrest does. So Waste Management did sharpen their pencil on this and has given us a good deal. It also modifies the rate adjustment formula in the contract. There are a couple of things that have come up recently. You're aware of SB one, that adjusted the fuel taxes in California. As a result, we're going to a California-specific fuel index to adjust rates based on California-specific factors. Same thing with labor. You're probably aware that the California minimum wage is accelerating more quickly than the rest of the country, so we're going to a California-specific labor index to account for that. And then we've also established a floor and a ceiling on future rate increases, so that rates don't go negative, but also don't go above a six percent increase in any given year. And then on July one, we will be passing through this one-time adjustment for changes in law. So with that, bring it back to the council, and we're here for any questions you may have.
What percentage of the state is in compliance with this right now, would you say? Do y'all have any statistics on that?
You know, I don't know off the top of my head. I do know that there are a significant number of jurisdictions, particularly in eastern California and in Sierra counties, that are not in compliance at this time, and that are receiving accommodations based on similar barriers that you have.
Okay, in the general spirit of the thing, it sounds like a good program from a standpoint of recycling and efficiency and reducing space in the landfills and all of those apple pie-type things, I think are great. I have a couple of concerns in that you've got a six percent max per year, well, in five years, so, I mean, we can be thirty percent, I mean, that's a six percent per year.
That's a cap on the index adjustments. Currently, you don't have any cap. Currently, the index adjustments are unlimited, both negative and positive. And so what we're doing is establishing a narrow band that rates can adjust within, and it's really sort of a ratepayer protection.
Okay, so is this rate structure the same across the state?
No, different agencies deal with it differently, but the way that we've proposed it here is fairly common, where it's included with the garbage service.
Have we established a norm or an average statewide?
No.
So basically, we're talking about one or two cans based upon the need, and I guess the only immediate concern I had was just from a, because I had spoken with Chip about this earlier on, and the only question, you know, I understand for a lot of the larger restaurants and so forth, I'm just curious as to the small, you know, the little subways of which we, we have lots of very small food-oriented businesses, very small. And if you go behind the counter, they don't have room for a chair to sit down. So I guess the question I have is, it's fine for a large space. Where do you put this monstrous can for a very small food outfit?
Yeah, so the good news is, the can that we showed, I'll put the picture back up there, those cans would actually be stored outside of the business, and they're more flexible than the big metal bins that you see out at businesses now, so it is a little bit easier to find places to tuck it in. One of the things that Waste Management will do with the site visits is to go into that Subway store, or the, you know, the sandwich shop, or whatever it is, and assess their layout and say, you know, you're using that as a trash can now. If you just use that as a food scraps receptacle from now on and put all of your other trash in this other one, you can make do with the same interior containers, and it's just a matter of sort of some technical assistance about how to lay things out, and that's why Waste Management will be doing those site visits, is to make sure they got a system that works for each of those businesses.
And so all this waste is collected and goes to whom and for what?
So it'll get initially dropped off at the Ridgecrest landfill, gets set on the ground, transferred into another truck, where Kern County will take it to the Mount Vernon compost facility in Bakersfield. There, it gets composted, and then the compost gets sold off to farmers in the valley.
And these folks bid it on that contract, to get the contract for the county to get to do this business? So how does that work?
It's a publicly-owned facility. It's a partnership between the city of Bakersfield and Kern County, and the Ridgecrest landfill is also publicly owned, it's owned by the county. So it's not a private operator that's bidding on any of the services here.
Okay. What are they, so right now, what are they, give me an idea... What are they, so right now, what are they, give me an idea of the other type of waste that they do and process and so forth.
So at the Mount Vernon compost facility currently, they're taking food scraps from Bakersfield and Wasco and Shafto and processing them at that facility. I think they're also going to be taking stuff from California City and maybe even Tehachapi back to that facility as well to be processed.
What is the main use that it's recycled as?
Compost material.
Compost material.
Yeah. And so that goes out onto valley farms, usually trees and vines.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other public, go ahead, Mike. So it says customers allowed up to two 64-gallon carts free with carbon subscription, but that's a little misleading because all businesses are going to have a rate increase of...
Included at no additional cost.
Other than the rate increase.
Other than the rate increase.
And the rate increase is 7.55%?
Correct.
Now, that's for all commercial businesses, not just the 107?
Correct.
So those of us that don't generate the waste are still going to pay for the waste?
Yeah. And the city still has an obligation to monitor, provide education, do the site visits, and report to the state on all of those customers that are seeing the rate adjustment. So there's some component of the city's obligations that cover all of those folks that are going to see the adjustment.
So anyone that doesn't do organic is paying the same thing as the restaurant business?
Yep.
How does that happen?
Well, it's, again, all of those are covered generators under AB 1826. Anybody that generates more than four cubic yards of material is a covered generator, and we have an obligation to monitor them, provide education, provide outreach, and report to the state about them. We also have to provide this program.
Well, it's not you. It's a state law, but I think I'm expressing Mike's sentiment a little bit. It's like I've got a hardware store or a plant store or a bookstore, and I'm paying this fee that, and I don't have anything to do with organic waste.
Yet.
I've got another question on monitoring. I assume someone's going to monitor the county that this is actually a haven at the landfill. And I'll give you an example. I'm a general contractor, and I have to fill out a form on every one of my houses that I recycle so much material. Well, I just happen to have a cardboard crusher, so I recycle cardboard, which is a pretty significant amount of
Oh, yeah.
of waste on a home because of everything that comes in cardboard. I went out to the dump one time, taking my non-recyclable stuff, and a lot of cardboard is going into the landfill. So I asked one of the guys at the dump, why isn't this getting recycled? He says, well, the county brought out a dumpster or a roll-off box, and we fill it up to overflowing. They never emptied it, so we just stopped putting it in. So I guess I'm concerned, I assume there's legal obligations for the county to make sure this happens.
Yeah. And that's, I mean, clearly that's some follow-up that needs to be done as we coordinate with the county. As Josh mentioned, one of the first steps is we need to work with the county on what's the day of service so that we know they're going to have an empty truck here, not an overflowing truck that can haul it off. One reassurance that we have is with cardboard, it can be in that roll-off box for almost an unlimited amount of time. It doesn't pose any public health risk. With food, it does pose a public health risk, and the operating permits at the county require it to either be hauled off the site or buried within 72 hours. So they're not going to have a lot of time to play with that. The concern would be making sure that they're not just burying it in the landfill after we're paying to have it recycled. And so that's where, you know, working with the county and Waste Management's operations folks, when they're there at the site, can be observing that.
Now, the interesting thing about this is, the last time I took cardboard down to Ontario for recycling, I got $160 a ton. Last time I took metal down, I got $20 a ton.
Yeah. The markets are awful right now.
So there's no incentive to recycle metal.
Yeah. It's bad.
Lindsay, did you, I'm sorry, did you have something you wanted to say? Wallace?
Normally, on these kind of things, you always have a number to bounce the number off of. So here's the number I'm looking for. Let's pretend, just in the odd chance we did nothing, then the state comes in, just like we have with the water deal, yep. We don't act, here they're going to come. So, okay, we don't act, and here they come. We have a number of what the here they come's going to be? What would that be?
$10,000 a day.
Yes.
They're...
Well, that's the penalty, but what, if they come in and set the rates?
They won't set the rates, and they won't set up a program for you. They'll put you on a compliance order, and if you don't fulfill the compliance order, they'll start fining you, and they can fine you up to $10,000 a day. And Ridgecrest is one of the few agencies that's received fines from CalRecycle, so you're definitely on their list. They're not going to give you a lot of latitude.
Well, I was just questioning the
The cost of the program.
But you're saying that formula is going to be pretty much used across the state?
Oh.
That's what I'm talking about, not the penalty.
The cost of service formula?
Cost of service formula, and if we don't do it, what's the state's magic cost of service formula?
They don't have one. They're just going to tell you, negotiate a program and have a service. They have left it up to each individual agency, 532 times around the state, to set up a program that works for their local community.
Yeah. They can fine us up to $10,000 a day until such time we have a program, which they did when we had the big Benz issue.
Right.
Well, I yield a little bit more to Mr. Maurer's comment and interest, because he has a prime business that's not necessarily organic, but has a piece of it.
I basically have no organic waste.
Yeah. It's just...
Eddie, did you have some questions?
I was just going to do a follow-up. How long have we been in non-compliance?
What was that again?
How long have we been in non-compliance?
Since April of 2016.
Almost two years.
We should have had a program on the ground.
We should have had one.
Right. And one of the things about AB 1826 is we have to design a program that people are going to participate in. If we design a program that's a failure, well, we just can't say we have a program. The program has to work. If it doesn't work, you can be put in compliance.
Would one of those compliances be us, us being Ridgecrest having our own landfill, which would be extremely expensive? Or could we even do that?
We will never have our landfill. Now, one of the good aspects of getting organics out of the waste stream is it extends the life cycle of our landfill. Those are expensive to replace. You have to find another place, you got to dig a hole, you got to line it, and you got to put a bunch of stuff in there. So the longer we can use our current landfill, the less expense we'll be spending annually on our access to the landfill.
Okay.
I have a number of questions. What is organics?
As the state defines it, it's anything that does currently or once did live, which is a very broad definition. For the purposes of compliance here, think yard trimmings and food scrapings.
Okay. In there, you referred to the food, the paper products
Mm-hmm.
that were part of food. And if you put, wrap a hamburger in a piece of paper, and it comes back, do you, is that paper? Is that recyclable or is it organics?
If it's a, if it's a piece of paper that is food-soiled, it should go into the organics container, one of those. If it's a piece of office paper, something like this, it should go in the recycling. But as soon as it has oil or moisture on it, it should go into the foods, the organics.
Okay.
Once it's contaminated by food.
I got it. I got it. Because I'm asking, not necessarily because you did explain it pretty well here, I just wanted to make sure our public understood what the difference was, paper and, because the next thing is going to be, and I know it's not tomorrow, but you're going to come back, the state is going to come back to private homes and say, you're next.
Yep.
And when it comes to us, I can see us out here, making sure that we are scraping baby food off the spoons and make sure that we're taking care of all these things that we have to do as individuals, because now the businesses have already borne the burden, and now it's going to come to us. I guess my concern is, now, I have people who order out for lunch, come back and bring their foods back to our waste can. Do I have to go through the seven people of mine who put their food in the waste can and recycle that in the organics can now? When does it become my responsibility to make sure everybody in my office separates their food from their paper and from recycle?
That's a, that's a complex question. The regulations are in draft right now for SB 1383. That law, as it's currently drafted in the regulations, would require you as the business owner and the arranger of waste services to make sure that your seven people in your business are separating their stuff properly. And under those proposed regs, if you fail to do that, the city would have somebody doing enforcement and would issue some warnings and notices of violation and then fines. That won't come until 2024. And so we've got some time to build to that, and part of the vision on this program as the bridge is to get the businesses who are the largest generators of organic material started on a program and used to participating.
I don't like this. I understand that we have no control over it. It is, we were told this is the way it's going to be. We haven't been compliant for a while, and now we're told you get compliant or you're going to pay significantly more. I understand we're going to have to do it, and I don't think there's any choice we have. I think one of the things we recognize, though, it's done, I have some friends who live in Washington State, and I know it's done that way there, and they were telling me that how they have to do it. And it's not a big thing for them because it's become part of their waste treatment and what they do with their garbage cans. And it's, we're going to bitch and moan and groan about it, but we're going to have to do it. Does that mean we're going to like it? Absolutely not. But it is something we're going to have to do. Am I characterizing that fairly?
Whether you like it or not, you're going to have to do something. And, you know, again, the state has given you some discretion about how you do it, and we think that we're delivering this in the most cost-effective way that we can.
I appreciate that. Pardon me?
Unless we split from California.
I don't think we can afford to be our own state here in Ridgecrest, so... Okay. Is there any other council comment?
I have one more, Madam Mayor, if you don't mind.
Please, sir.
Is there any business that is, are exempt from this mandate?
Businesses could demonstrate that they're handling their material on their own. So, for example, grocery stores often backhaul their own food waste, because they've got a truck that's coming to deliver stuff, so they load that truck up with stuff and take it back and separate the cardboard and have the food composted. So those folks may be exempt. Multifamily properties that either don't have landscaping or have a landscaping service that deals with their material can be exempt, but in each of those cases, they've got to demonstrate that they're handling their material responsibly.
Let me ask this question from, what about churches?
Nope.
They're not exempt from this process?
Nope. And churches, in fairness, do generate a fair bit of organic material, usually because, you know, they're serving breakfast on Sunday morning or for Bible studies or whatever. So, yeah.
I'm not announcing that.
You're announcing that you're not going to be serving breakfast.
Not anymore. There's going to be some coffee grounds or something there.
Wow.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Is there any other council questions or comments? Okay, public?
My question is, is it you?
I'll be close at hand.
Okay. In fact, I understand her, we both do it. Ronald Porter, my first question is, this mandate, is it against, is the city mandated or is the waste company mandated? In other words, if it doesn't happen, who gets to pay? Who's the fall guy?
The city.
Okay. You had a question about markets, because most of the markets I know actually send their stuff back already. Do they still have to pay this extra fee?
Yes.
Okay. But the only increase you're talking about for this is businesses at this point, right?
Businesses and multifamily property owners.
Thank you.
Any other public comment, questions?
I have comments when I have public comment time.
We just did.
You just did.
No, no, this is questions for him. I have comments when you have public comment time.
We've already, we're doing public comment on it right now.
No, you asked if anyone had questions for him, which is what I did.
Okay. We're still going to have public comment right now when we're doing this.
Well, then I'll just call it.
Okay. All right.
Stan Ratora. I heard a comment about Kern County, and it sounds almost too good to be true. I was wondering if there's more, more behind the county providing this so-called free service than we've been led to believe. I can't believe Kern County, with their current financial situation, is going to do anything free, more, over, and beyond what they're already doing. Is there, is there some explanation for how this all came about or how it's happening? Or how are they being funded to do this?
Ron, do you want to address that, or do you want to have Waste Management or our consultants?
Yes, Dan. So Kern County Waste Management Department assesses three different types of charges. One is a land use fee that every residential parcel owner pays every year in the county to support the landfill system. One is a gate fee for material that comes through their gate that is not residential material, and then one is a bin fee for businesses per cubic yard of your bin service. They charge that to every business, every parcel in the county. They provide organic service to Bakersfield residents, unincorporated Bakersfield residents, Shafto, Wasco, and their feeling was, we need to provide even service for the whole county if we're charging these same fees across the county. So because they're doing it in the valley, they decided they needed to extend that to the East County area, and frankly, the West County area as well, to make sure that they're providing even service for the payers of the service.
Thank you. It kind of sounds like we've been paying more than our share for the last few years. Okay, that's the answer I was asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, council members, are we getting any money from the state for our efforts in doing this? Okay.
No.
Each and every one of you took an oath to uphold and support the State of California Constitution. The State of California Constitution says that they cannot mandate this on the city without paying. It's an unfunded mandate, so California cases against it, they have to pay. Go to Cal League of California cities, I don't care where you go, they need to pay. Because whether you, whether you move the tax on to the customer, it's a tax. You all sit there and look at me like this isn't important, it is very important. We put this in the Constitution because the state kept mandating things on local people. We need to get off our duffs and do something. I don't understand the problem. We're going to have a health and safety problem with this stuff sitting around at 110 degrees out there for a week at these businesses or three days or whatever. No one's talking about the health and safety problems. Sits out there and spoils and then gets dumped or whatever. This is just, all of us want to protect the environment, but I want to see one of you, just one of you stand up and say, we're going to go stop this unfunded mandate. I don't understand why that's a problem. Can anyone answer that?
What is the problem you're seeing that, other than the funding, do you see a problem?
Well, actually, there's a health and safety problem, but the funding. Because all they're doing to you is the city is turning around to the state saying, okay, we're going to mandate this on the people, and they're making the city the bad guys, using an administrative, nonjudicial process to fine you, unconstitutional, no due process. Then you just move the tax on to the business. Mike shouldn't have to pay $7 and something a month extra for this. Neither should any, I'm sorry, Mr. Maurer. Neither should any other business. We have to do this reasonably responsibly. The California way of doing things is the lazy man's way out. And we need to stop allowing them to do it. This is an unfunded mandate. I've sent council members this on numerous times. Look it up, it says, and believe it or not, they can't even fine you. It says, if they're not funding it, they cannot hold you accountable for it or fine you for it.
Well, it seems surprising to me that, I'll just say it, that they're going to say, we're going to fine you $10,000 a day, and they did in the past.
No, they didn't.
Wait a minute, let me finish. They did in the past with Benz, and the fact that we didn't comply, we weren't in compliance, we paid those fines.
Only because we were too coward not to.
Okay.
I was dealt, I dealt with every piece of it.
The fact remains that they did, and we paid, and we bore the burden of trying to fight it. And in fighting it, we suffered more burden. It is simply not the way that things are done anymore. You can say it's the law. You can say it's the law, but Ron, the reality is, the state says, you do it and you do it or you pay for it.
No. The reality is, the California Constitution very clearly states it. That's what I'm trying to explain to you. Also, we did not pay for failure to mandate. We paid for a different failure. I know I went through the whole process. We did not pay for failure. We paid because we didn't comply with an order fast enough. We didn't get a fine for not doing it.
What it comes down to is, Ron, we can fight dragons or we can fight reality.
No, you've said, we, the people of Ridgecrest, we have representatives. If my representatives can't uphold my constitution, State of California, then we need to change them. All you have to do, there's, look in the California, California code, business code, or government code. It says exactly what you have to do, file and request it. Do it, please.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
We'd have to sue the state and we're not going to win. We've sued the state before and we haven't won.
No, there's a process to apply for it. And it goes, and it's a mandate, and you just go to the court and say, we want this. You file it, you do the administrative process. If they don't do it, you take it right to the court. And every court decision is, has agreed that it is an unfunded mandate and they have to pay or it's unenforceable. If we have a constitution that nobody will stand up and enforce, what good is it?
Everybody in the, every city, every entity in the State of California that is told, you will do, you want every one of us to say, no, we won't?
That's why we have a League of California Cities. Why don't they get together and says, we don't have to, it's unfunded. If the League of California Cities can't get together and do one thing, uphold our constitution, we need to get out of it and we need to get out of it fast.
Aren't you meeting Friday with the League of California Cities?
Can we postpone the vote on just one meeting and let me get a league ruling on it?
Sir?
I think all of the work that you're going to try doing is going to get you nowhere. This program's been on the ground and mandatory since April 1st of 2016. Everybody's on board with this. Compliance orders are going out July 1st. I don't, I have not seen anything in my research. We have Waste Management here. We have Rob Hilton, who is our solid waste consultant. He's an expert in this area. We used him to get us out of the bins compliance in the past. And if he tells me that there's no way out of this thing, this is where we're heading, that's exactly where we're at.
I think we have a responsibility to protect our public as well as do what's best for them. And I don't want to bear the burden of a $10,000 a day of fine because we want to find, fight a Don Quixote-type fight. And I think that it is, we can fight dragons or we can fight reality.
No, you can fight for freedom or you can't. You're going to roll over and play dead or you're not. And that's what I'm trying to say here. If you want to put this gentleman and get this started to keep that fine away, if that's an immediate fix, then fine. But we need to file and say, you have to pay for all of this, including city inspections, including his costs. And when you win, you go back over and have his costs returned. If you had to spend $100,000 to buy a truck, then you get it returned to him.
Madam Mayor.
We need to stand up and act like citizens.
This is exactly what got us out of compliance in the first place.
Actually, no, it's not. The reason we were out of compliance is we didn't act fast enough. When we had time to deal with it, we could have had this discussion and said, okay, let's do this where we have time to deal with it. This last-minute stuff always bites us in the butt and the people don't get heard.
Thank you, Ron.
Can I ask something? So, could we go ahead and move forward with it, but send a letter saying, questioning about it being an unfunded mandate as the City of Ridgecrest and that we are frustrated with the number of unfunded mandates that seem to come our way frequently?
Well, I don't think that it's going to be a solution to it, but we certainly can ask that question. I suggest that we go, well, wait a minute, let me, before we do this, Mike, please.
Okay. First, I want to thank Mrs. Stevens for that question. And I would urge the entire council to actually consider what Mr. Porter just said. He knows his stuff. Any of you around town here some years ago, well, and started with the mandatory recycling for the citizenry, which was a big fight. Guess what? They didn't end up having to do it. And guess what? It was $10,000 a day, fine. That is absolutely a false statement. It wouldn't be $10,000 a day. So, I'd like to hear that being stopped, repeated. It's gauged to the size of the city. It's gauged by certain factors. And I don't remember the numbers. Do you remember the numbers, sir, from the non-compliance from back in 2008 about the citizenry waste mandatory recycling? What that might have been?
What the fine was actually that the city paid?
Well, what it might have actually been, it wasn't $10,000, there's never $10,000 a day, ever. But you don't remember? Okay. It was way less than that, okay? Now, the point, again, that Mr. Porter was saying, and I want to back up and just back him up on that, is you have this unfunded mandate. The state comes down and they try to take this huge sledgehammer. And then you get staff that hasn't acted on it now for almost two years, to their own admission, coming to you saying, oh, you have to do something now. They're going to find us in July, starting in July, you know, four months from now, they're going to start finding us. Well, we could have had time to discuss it. We had time to think about it. We could have had time to research it. And you got businesses, one of your very own, who are going to sit up here and pay increased cost and not even need the service. They're putting up how many businesses they think have got four cubic yards plus per week of, you know, organics, but they're not showing you how many others don't have that and where the inequity is on making all these businesses that have zero organics or maybe, you know, a couple of pails worth that they're probably not going to bother scraping up and collecting. They're going to have to pay anyway, but, you know, so what? Big deal. They're just passing it on to the customers. Well, you're going to be customer, all you're going to be their customers, all you're going to pay increased cost to pay for this illegal mandate that the state is trying to ram down your throats because we're the big bad state and you can't fight us. Well, let me just tell you one thing. It's very simple. Since apparently every other city in California doesn't care to fight for this illegal mandate, they don't care to fight it, they don't care to do anything but bend over, submit to it, and go on with their life because, oh, well, you know, we've got better, bigger things to worry about or whatever. This is how you get chipped away at and chipped away at and chipped away at, just like taxed to death and taxed to death and taxed to death, a little bit, a little bit, a little bit. And pretty soon, every single tiny little aspect of your existence is mandated, regulated, put down some law about what you have to do. And it all started when government representatives didn't want to look at and go, hold on just a minute. You can't do this. This is illegal. You can't make our citizens do this. And we're not going to stand for it because this is a precious commodity. Freedom is a lot more precious commodity than a couple of bucks. Let them get away with it. Go ahead. It's been happening for years. And here we are in the blue state of California, living in a socialist state.
Thank you. Okay, I was going to make a suggestion, but I wanted Mr. Neal to have his opportunity to speak. I don't want to take a chance of being in not compliance and do what we need to do. I would like to go ahead and approve this, but I would also like to go ahead and ask Mr. Martin, when he goes to the League of Cities on Friday, see what other cities are doing. I think that's appropriate. When we come back and find if other cities are doing anything and what they, what actions they are taking, then we can come back and do what is necessary and appropriate as other cities are doing.
Madam Mayor, can we have Mr. Hilton weigh in on that? I mean, since he's our solid waste expert, this is all he does for a living. He goes around the state, they have numerous customers. So, he would probably know, because he is connected with the League of California Cities, he would probably know if there's any effort out there to stop this.
Okay, please.
Yeah, the, I've been in probably 30 meetings in the last two years talking about this program with the public and council members very frustrated about the sense that this is an unfunded mandate. And it certainly feels like that. The state legally, and we could get the city attorney to look at it, I suppose, but the state works around the constitutional requirement that was being raised by saying, city, you can fund this program by charging your rate payers to recover your costs for it. And so that's a common workaround that's in a lot of these bills. We've had a lot of summits with city attorneys trying to figure out, how do we work around it? And the answer is, you got to have a program. You can get an exemption if you are in a rural county. You're not in a rural county. Mammoth Lakes, for example, has an exemption right now that will wind out, I think, at the end of 2019. And they'll ultimately have to comply. So, even those that were built into the legislation as having exemptions, the exemption sunset at some point. So, I just, I don't think you're going to find a way around doing something, providing a program, doing the education outreach and monitoring. It's frustrating, but it's sort of the reality of the situation.
I have one more question. Because I had brought this up earlier. How do you deal with pests and issues and things like that? Because as he mentioned, it's a bunch of food sitting outside in 115 degrees rotting. So, rats and things and cockroaches, what, I mean?
That same material is going into another type of container right now. It's going into a big metal open top dumpster, probably, in most cases. The state health and safety code requires that you provide service once every seven days specifically to deal with the public health and safety issue. You know, I will acknowledge that when it gets to be summer around here and you've got some of those containers ripening in the summer heat, they may have an odor to them, but they're sealed top containers, they're not likely to attract rats. You may get some fruit flies that grow in them or things like that, but that's why we're having them serviced every seven days.
That's one of the questions that somebody came to me today and asked. And I said, well, right now, it's sitting in your dumpster that isn't sealed as fully as these dumpsters. And it's sitting there rotting and smelling and causing flies. So, it's still there. It's not like, if, and if anything, to me, these organic dumpsters will be a better solution than just sitting there.
You just brought up something to mind for me. You said state losses, they need to be dumped every seven days.
Correct.
Okay, in Ridgecrest Waste Management, if Monday's a holiday, they're always a day late. So, now that's going to be eight days.
Yeah, depending on how they accommodate the holiday for businesses, yeah.
Well, I know on my business, my dumpsters get dumped a day late because of Monday holiday.
I guess the issue is, we don't know yet which day it would be. It may be Wednesday. And if we choose Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, there are relatively few holiday impacts around that.
No, you're missing the point. My regular day is Wednesday. On a Monday holiday, my dumpster gets dumped on Thursday.
Gotcha. So, the whole weekish sliding.
Yeah.
Yeah, the whole week sliding. Because their employees are off on Monday.
Right.
And so they can't do two days on Tuesday. It takes them all week to get caught back up. So, are they in violation of state law? Is there an exception because of holidays?
I've never seen somebody fined for that, and it's pretty common. I mean, holiday delay is, happens all the time in the state. And I've not heard of a fine for that.
In 115-degree weather, I'm not sure one more day is going to make a difference.
That's a fair point.
Well, from a standpoint, I've kind of gone this way and that way on this in thinking and listening. The thing that's bothering me the most about this is, you know, every single business, every business has its own, you know, its own assets and liability column and their own expense and unique expense column, whether it's a daycare or it's a, you know, hardware or a stationery store or swap sheet. Everybody's very unique. Every business is very unique. And when you go into that business, you go into it knowing what your parameters and are, what your extra and special expenses are and how you're going to compensate for that. I mean, that's, that goes with the territory. What's concerning me about this is why in the world would you have, would you have a particular sector dealing with organic waste, then they should pay the fee for their specific business for their organic waste? And if I'm a business to the left of that store or the right of that store, McDonald's, and I have no organic waste whatsoever, and I'm just arbitrarily going to be paying the same type of thing that the people who deal with tons of this, then it's a tax. Then what happens is what you're, it's twisted around, but it becomes a tax. It's just, it's everybody's going to pay a flat tax. You get to pay more, I guess, if you're McDonald's because you're going to need more containers. I get that. But when everybody is levying something when they're not using it, that it's a tax, is what it is. I mean, that's what my brain is telling me right now. And the other thing is, so again, I have said it at this council many times. I said I was not going to vote for anything. No, I'm just voting no on anything that I feel rushed, put in the corner on, duct taped, handcuffed, it's got to be tonight. This is another deal where we hadn't done anything with this for two years.
That's not totally true.
Well, no, but we haven't done anything with this issue, as you said, for two years, right? We've been behind the ball for two years.
The process began in 2015. It took us two years to be able to get this to the point to where it was affordable and it was effective. And we would be developing a program that'd be accepted by Cal Recycle. That's what took the time.
Right. I talked to you, Ron, the other day, and I congratulated you for the work that you've done on this, and I mean that, okay? I know that you have been working solidly on this. And I also told you in that meeting that I think that the amount that's being charged seems incredibly low. I can't imagine bringing a truck around and pick up that nasty trash that's been sitting in the sun and everything and a special route and a whole deal for this, these fees. But what I've also learning is that this can go up 7% a year, boom, 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 you know, that there's a cap that this can go up. And so that's a little bit of concern for me. I guess my only concern is this, Ron. Look, this is another one of these deals where we haven't done it in two years. I don't care. And then all of a sudden, we have a schedule in the back of the book that, oh, boom, 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 we all go to jail if we don't act tonight. So, if you want to postpone this till one more meeting, not two, three, four, but one more meeting where we can have a chance to, me to talk to the league and get a little more input, not five, six, seven meeting, but just one more. If it's tonight, I'd vote no. I don't care how good Santa Claus is. I don't care what it is. I'm voting no. So, if you want to wait one more meeting so we get to get a little more information, then I might actually vote yes. But tonight, no. I mean, not, not on the spotlight.
The reason it's affordable is because it's spread amongst all of us. If it was only those 107 businesses paying for this, it'd be extremely expensive.
More likely we'd not, more likely we'd not have the businesses that would engage in it. Or you'd have those businesses and they're complaining that the cost was so high. We are all going to be in the organic waste disposal business in 2022, the entire community. We have to work our way into this program. There is no way out of it. Rob, can you answer one question? Is there any city or entity out there that's currently involved in litigation with the state to stop this program?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
I want to ask another question. This is for Waste Management. Right now, my, I have two dumpsters in the back of my property, the trucks come in and they're dumping. Now, this looks like the type of thing that's put out on the street. So, if I decided, even though I'm not one of the 107 businesses, whatever it is, that since I'm paying this, I want one of those. It's free. Do I have to roll that out on the curb?
No. No, it'll be.
The truck will still come back where my others are.
Yes. Wherever you have your trash in your recycling containers now, the idea is this would be placed right beside it and we would service it from that, from that point.
So, if I decided to get one of these and I want, and I've got four bushes and two trees and my employees go to McDonald's or whatever.
Correct.
Then I would have them throw all that stuff.
Correct. Correct. And actually, that would actually be a trigger where you would, you would, if you read the law to its full effect, that that's what would trigger you to have, have to have it. So.
We wouldn't fill it, but.
Correct. But you have the service.
So, he wouldn't have to pay any extra even though he's one of the, not one of the 107? He could just say, I want one of those cans? And you wouldn't charge him an additional fee?[1749.12] fee?
Currently, at this time, the, the way the program is proposed, we are meeting the January 1st, 2019 threshold of generators of four cubic yards of solid waste per week. So if we're picking up your three cubic yard container, which is the most average-sized dumpster you see out there, more than once per week, or if you have two and we're picking them up at the, at the same time, this is who this program is designed for. Moving forward, as we prepare for, for the future, the thresholds, depending on whether or not the state meets its, its goal, would potentially ratchet down to two cubic yards a week, and subsequently, probably extended to residents. At that point in time, we would open that program up to, to a wider array of, of customers. But this is specifically designed to meet the, the law as it stands, as of January 1st, 2019.
Now, that, that four yard per week does not include the recycling dumpsters, is that correct?
Correct. This is solid waste, correct? So just trash.
You may even find that some of the customers that are engaged and, that are now processing their organic waste may be able to reduce the size of their other waste cans, and they might actually save money on the other end of things.
Only the ones that generate a lot.
So if I was a restaurant, then I could, you say, save money, because I would have this 64...
Theoretically speaking, if you removed organic waste from your trash container, that, that would potentially preserve more recyclables that could potentially be put into a recycling container, which, as we know here in Ridgecrest, as a part of the service cost, recycling has been built in already. And so you could put that material into a recycling container if it was recyclable, and reduce either the size of the container or the frequency of service on your trash. So it would be a net savings to you, correct?
Let me take it one step further. If I take my, if I get more recycling, more, I got it, never mind, I got it.
Okay.
I got it.
Okay.
I might save money.
Potentially, yes. And, and ultimately, let's be honest, where, where the state is trying to get to is, is where your trash container is by far your smallest container, and that most of your material is going into a recycling container or an organics container. So that's, that's the direction we're headed in.
I don't like, as Wallace says, these mandated things that say we have to do it now, but I recognize the fact for two years, how diligently it was done before Mr. Strahan became our city manager, I can attest to. But I can say that I know it's been done diligently since then, and I say, I say we need to do what we need to do and continue to do research on the other things. And if we wanna talk to other cities, I say, go do it. It's to our benefit. It is also to our benefit to go ahead and send a letter to the state afterwards. Even if we approve this, we're not committing ourselves to anything that we aren't already going to be committed to anyhow. And so I say, we need to go ahead and do it. We need to follow those things and say to the state, we don't like it. Talk to other cities and see what they're doing, but this is the reality of the situation. Is there any other council discussion?
Ready for a motion?
I'm gonna say, is there no more public discussion? Okay.
Can I have a question?
Please come up here.
Yeah, Dame Matthews, I'm just a single-family residential owner, so I understand that this doesn't, right now, apply to me. But I'm a little confused, because I have a green container, and I have a couple of blue containers. In the green container, I put all my trash. Now, some of that is, is food waste, but some of it is not. So if, if I don't put my food waste, my organic waste into a container, what's left to put in the green container? I, I don't, I don't see what, what the difference is. Anybody, anybody got an answer?
There, therein lies the, the rub, as they say. As I mentioned earlier, the long-term goal, obviously, is to reduce the amount of solid waste going to landfills. And the gentleman is correct, as I explained earlier, that from a standpoint of, we know the contents of what people are throwing away. It's a lot of recyclable material, and some food waste, and a minimum amount of non-recyclable material. Those would be certain types of, of packaging materials that, for lack of, of an ability to either process and/or have a market for reuse or resale, that, that's what would end up going to, to the, to the landfill. Dirty diapers, those sorts of things. They're just not a, a reuse opportunity for those. But I think the gentleman is correct in stating that ultimately, where we're probably gonna end up is, is that you will have a very large recycling container and a very large green waste slash organics container, and a very small trash can.
Eddie?
I got, I just got one quick question, and it's probably not a very nice question. I, I have some people that use some of the organic waste to feed their animals. What, what, what happens to those people that use those things to take care of their animals that helps with the cost keeping it down?
Correct. So in terms of, of, if this were a business, whether they were donating to a, a food rescue program, a, a charity, and/or had set up a, basically a third-party relationship to divert their, their food waste, that would be ways of, of complying with the law. It certainly would keep their costs reduced for the organic service to the, the minimum. In this case, they could probably just get by on, on the containers that would be included as a part of their, their trash service. It's actually a very smart idea in terms of, of finding those alternative beneficial reuse. As much as composting is, is nice, if you can find a way to use the material locally, either through a food rescue and/or an, an alternative such as, as feeding animals and/or composting onsite, more power to you. Roll call.
Is there a motion from council?
I move approval of a resolution of the City of Ridgecrest Council to enter a First Amendment to the Solid Waste Franchise Agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Mauer?
What are you doing?
No, he's having a technical issue.
So we're gonna have to do a roll call vote. Mr. Mauer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Nay.
Nope.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Four ayes, one no, motion carries.
The next item is an item, let me see. This item will, there is no need for this item on the agenda. It's a discussion of the groundwater authority to give direction to me. We don't have an agenda yet, so thank you for putting it on, but it is not needed at this time. Certainly.
Stan Rattorah. About a year, maybe a little more than that ago, I recommended to the groundwater authority that they start looking at the liability of Kern County for funding certain aspects of the GSA. The, the fact is that the Kern County collects taxes from all of the agricultural properties, and my understanding, even though I can't give you any quantitative information, is that the, the money that's collected from pistachio farms or any type of a tree farm is fairly significant compared with the cash crops like alfalfa or that type of thing. And so what I would like to request is that this agency ensure that its representative not allow the imposition of, of fees based upon water usage until we have an accurate accounting of what the county is actually getting in terms of benefit from the use of the water. I, I think it's pretty clear that the county encouraged farmers, they actually zoned land for farming, they provided water in terms of permits for agricultural wells, and they, they are a major contributor to the problem that we are currently having in the valley. So I want, I would like to see that this agency...
Who is the "they" you're referring to?
Pardon?
Who is the "they" you were referring to? They are the...
I'm, I'm, sorry, I can't hear.
Who is the "they" you were referring to?
The county. The county of Kern provided the zoning for the agricultural land, they provided the permits for the agricultural wells, they are collecting taxes from the agricultural land, they encouraged the farmers to farm in our valley. However, they use very little water, Kern County, that is. So therefore, a fee that is imposed strictly on the volumetric use of water, they would pay nothing, whereas they are the only agency among the GSA that is actually benefiting from the use of water, and they need to pay their share of whatever fees or, or, whatever it is, the, the revenue for the GSA. Some of that has to come from the county. And, and obviously, we have a supervisor from Kern County, lives locally here, he's supposed to be representing us, and he should be proactive in terms of making sure that the county is reimbursing our valley for the water that is being used. Thank you.
Okay. You, I appreciate what you said. I can tell you that last year, the last year and a half, Kern County spent $450,000 on the GSA formation so far. I don't know how much money they've collected, and I did ask, as you sent that information to me, I did ask Supervisor Gleason, could he make comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, I, we all know that they have spent some money in the past. I hope that the city, just like the county did last year, is recording how much money the city, because we are now in charge, or the city's in charge...
Yes, sir, we are.
Of the GSA. I hope that we're keeping track of how much money the city is spending, and I think you'll find that it is a, a good amount of money. The fact that the county spent a certain amount of money last year, yeah, true, that's fine.
And next year, the water is...
But I'm more interested in what is their share and responsibility in terms of funding the GSA? And, and certainly, they need to be given credit for that. That, there's no question about that.
For the $450,000, yeah. Okay. Thank you, sir. Mike?
Yes, council. Very astute observation by Mr. Rattorah. I hadn't actually considered before. Keep in mind that the agriculture, the county allowed permits for the wells for, encouraged, I believe, is well over 2,000 acres of pistachios, which have been reported to yield a profit of $3,000 per acre per year. So the county is going to be getting taxes based on well over $6 million of profit per year from those operations. They, they stand to intake a lot of money based on the fact that they let them settle here in the valley. And lo and behold, right after they got it placed, then the big fight over the, you know, who's pumping all this water out of the valley? We've gotta have a sustainable aquifer, we've gotta have a GSA, so, so forth and so on. And now, we're gonna have to import water. There's almost no doubt. And ask anybody who knows, I'm sure Mrs. Breeden knows, that's gonna be very costly water, and every pumper in the valley then is gonna turn around and pay a lot more for their water. In conjunction with that, I believe, I got an email, and there's to be a district committee meeting, but the Water Management Committee, and they're gonna be starting to look at importing water, where they're gonna get it from, so forth and so on. The TAC GSA Committee recently put out a schedule of what they're going to address at their meetings, and in April, they're gonna start looking at sources of importing water and take that on. And I encourage the council members as advisors to your representative on the GSA to get educated about this, because it's going to be a big deal. This is a, basically, a tax on the citizenry that is, is going to happen, and it is not going to be insignificant. Your water bill could go way up because of this.
Thank you, sir. Okay. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. This is a public hearing, appeal of the Planning Commission vote to deny a time extension for tentative tract map, 6676 through February 14th, 2019. Said tract map being a residential subdivision of the southeast corner of the Gateway Boulevard in Upjohn Avenue, APN number 343070-34, applicant Cornerstone Engineering on behalf of Pam Ridgecrest Venture LLC. Sir?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, in summary, this was a tentative tract map that was due, actually did expire per this denial of the extension on February 14th of this year. Cornerstone, on behalf of Pam Ridgecrest Ventures, applied in due time for a extension of one year, or as our municipal code allows. And during the hearing, or during the discussion on January 23rd, at the Planning Commission meeting, there was, there were two issues that were raised. The, the first of which was the question of bonding, because the original tentative tract map that was approved did not allow for phasing, and consequently, the improvements associated with the project would need to be bonded for all at once. The second question was, there was some confusion due to the accidental omission of a copy of the map from the staff report as to whether or not there was a onsite sump, which would be sufficiently shallow to double as a pocket park for the residents of the subdivision. And that was partially, because it was concluded that, that did not have the sump park, that was partially the basis for the denial. But I can confirm that the map does, in fact, have a pocket park slash sump of a little bit more than an acre, and it does, in fact, conform to the general plan requirements that were being discussed on January 23rd. So therefore, I feel it's appropriate to, to hear the appeal and allow the applicant to make their presentation.
I would, I would like, I see that we have the Chair of the Planning Commission here. Would it be appropriate to have you address why the Planning Commission took the action it did? Is there somebody who can address that, or would you care to do it, Mr. Chair?
Can I ask a quick question really fast first? So in our summary, it says for a one-year extension, but I saw in the letter from Cornerstone Engineering, it says denied a two-year extension.
Right.
So did, are, are you wanting a one-year or a two-year extension?
Whatever the code allows, max. If the code allows one year, then...
Can someone clarify if it's supposed to be a one or a two-year?
Excuse me, the code, the code allows, correct me if I'm wrong, Giancarlo, three-year extension in one-year increments. So they can only get one year at a time.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so part of the history on this, from the Planning Commission's standpoint, is this original tract map was brought in and approved 12 years ago. Now, because of the recession, the state stepped in and allowed a period of grace so that these tracts did not fall out for the developers, and the economy has subsequently come back to a point, depends on which area you live in. And, and because of that, the question was whether or not you extend a, or allow this if it's already 12 years old. There was presented to us a map that did not show any water retention, which is required, and that was also a factor in our decision. Part of the decision was, our city engineer also came forth, and he says, the concern that he had, we had two tract maps by the same developer, the Cornerstone... that he had, we had two tract maps by the same developer that Cornerstone was representing. One was phased and one was not. And he says, if, if you approve it, where we have not approved the tract map as a phased project, they'll have to bond the whole thing. And so the, the Planning Commission felt like we were actually doing them a favor, allowing, we're not saying you can't do it, just bring it back to us as a phase, showing the requirements that we need. And so for that reason is why we denied it. The next day, I received an email from Mr. Whitten, and he stated, "Just grant the two years and move on. Nothing is going to happen in the next two years," which concerns me. If nothing's going to happen, why extend it? Eventually, it will die and come back around, and a new map submitted, and it can all be dealt with then," close quote. So I'm not sure what he's asking for, if, if nothing's going to happen over the next couple of years. They've had 12. So that's where the Planning Commission was coming from. Any questions that you might have for me?
I was at that Planning Commission meeting, and I heard all the testimony, all the way around, from everybody, and the questions that were answered. And my impression was that the Planning Commission was trying to do them, I'm going to say, a nice deed, to be able to allow it to come back. So I guess what I'm going to ask is, can we have them come up and explain why they didn't feel it was a good thing for them? Because that was what I understood you all were doing, was to help them along with the process, so they didn't have to bond the whole thing.
Well, be mindful, Madam Mayor, that because of the omission of staff, they do comply by the general plan. And had that information been there-
Been there.
...short of the phasing, we would have probably extended it.
Right.
But my concern is, if they're not going to do anything, and they haven't done anything in the last 12 years, I would rather have them come back with phasing when they're ready to move forward, and, and we'll grant it and move it forward. So anyway, if the council doesn't have any questions for me, that'll kind of give you where we stand.
Now, I'm confused, because we're saying the original wasn't phased, but the one in before us tonight shows three phases.
Yeah, it was not phased.
I've got the wrong map?
There, there was-
On page 15, it shows phase one, two, and three.
No, that was the other, that was the one that was approved.
Oh, that's the one that was approved?
Yeah, right.
Oh, that's 679.
Yep, exactly.
Well, then where is the map? Do we not have the map of the other?
Yeah, I think it's, it's actually the very last page, page 16, the very last.
Right.
Keep going, all the way to the very end of your packet.
I think 16.
There's different staff reports. There's a staff report from Planning Commission-
Oh, here it is.
-several years ago, and then the most recent staff report, so.
6676, okay. So it shows, it shows the part, some part designation, but it doesn't show any phasing, okay.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the Chair?
Any questions for me?
Mr. Chair, if they, are they proposing to phase it like the Planning Committee wants it?
No, 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 you have to understand, we have to either approve it the way it stands or not.
Hold on, let me finish my question.
Okay.
If they're, if they are planning to do that, would it not just stick with the Planning Commission? Why is it coming up to us?
You'll have to ask Mr. Whitten on that. Because that was our problem. We could, ours was to either extend it or not extend it. We could not change the conditions, because it was already approved this way. So it was an extension, it wasn't a modification to a tentative tract map.
Okay, well, I will ask him.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you want to add anything before we come back here? To help us understand what he's going to tell us, so, and I know we will, but I want to make sure we understand where the Planning Commission was coming from and the planner.
I would only add that if the extension were granted, it could potentially facilitate the amend, the approval filing of an amended map that would provide for phasing. And that seems to be, I will let Mr. Whitten speak for himself, but that seems to be the intention.
I guess what I'm going to ask before is when you all remarked that, if, when the commissioners remarked that those, that information was not given to them, and therefore, they only had the two choices, approve or deny, they couldn't change it. Do you want to address that?
It's true that they could only approve or deny it. It's, we do have a process for amending a map that's been approved, and it would reduce some of the barriers, rather than starting with a clean sheet, so to speak.
Anybody have any other questions on this before we go ask Cornerstone?
I'll send for Adam.
Okay, please, go ahead.
Madam Chairman, this is not the Planning Commission, this is the City Council. I think Mr. Cox gave a good description of the history. The only thing I could add to that is that between 2005 and 2008, I think there were about 20 tentative tract maps that were approved in Ridgecrest. My firm didn't do all of them, I think we did 12 to 15 of them, but there's, there's a number of tract maps that are all going to expire in the next 12 months. And so you're going to see a parade of these maps come through the Planning Commission. And I'm here to tell you, I think there's very little risk that the city has to extending these maps, and I'll tell you why. First of all, none of these maps are vested maps, so whatever develops out of them has to be done in accordance with the current fee structure and the current design standards of the city. So even though all of these maps have rather simple conditions of approval, they were all written by Joe Pollock back when he was city engineer, but they still have to comply with the current city standards when they're, when they go to development. So when you extend these maps, there's really no risk to the city, as if these are frozen in time back 12 years ago. The second thing I want to, I want to let you know is that these maps were all made with a significant investment by the developer. So the typical cost to take one of these maps from beginning to end through the planning process is 15 to $50,000, depending on the size of the map. And so the developer has to pay for soils report, biota studies, and any other studies that the Planning Commission asked for. So once these maps are dead, those studies die along with them, and if you start over again, you have to pay for new studies and a new investment. And the third thing is, the city has the right to grant these extensions, I think, at relatively little risk, and in the process, they're sending a message to the development community. Now, in, in the email that I sent to Warren, it is true, I'd be willing to bet you that when we finally come around in another two or three years, we've granted these extensions to these maps, most of them will not be developed. But we don't know what's going to happen in the next three years. There might be some good stuff happen around here. And these maps may, may turn out to be significant assets that somebody can move ahead with and develop housing on. I think the city should encourage people to, to be optimistic about the future of Ridgecrest. And slapping these maps down is not a good message to tell people, "Well, we had the right to grant you an extension, but we don't, we don't think your map's ever going to do anything." I don't think that's the kind of message we want to send to people. And with regard to phasing, you'll notice that in the agenda packet, Mr. Maurer picked up the wrong map. That's a map that is right catty-cornered across from this one. It's 6679. Now, on that map right there, we did bring that map back to the City Planning Commission in 2009 as an amended map, and we went through a real simple process to have the Planning Commission and the city engineer review and approve the phasing on the map. So if we grant the extension to these, these other maps as they come through, if they need to be phased, there's a process in place where these maps can go back in front of the Planning Commission and have the phasing approved on them. And it's a pretty simple process, and Lauren's been through it a couple of times on other maps. So I'm just asking that we encourage the development community by keeping these maps alive as they come through, let's, it, as I said, I don't think there's any risk to the city, because they're not vested maps. And if they-
Would you explain to everyone what a vested map is?
Well, let's, let's pretend that you're in the city of Irvine, and you have a map that was, you're in an environment where the fee structure changes almost yearly, and the fees can go up a lot. Vesting maps can, when, when you, when you get a vested map approved, you're locking in the design standards and the fee structure that's in place on the day your map is approved. So in, in a town where the fees go up quite a bit, I mean, the traffic impact fee in Bakersfield in 2005 was like $2,500 a home, and now it's about $12,000. So if you've got a vested map, and the city of Bakersfield typically does grant approval of, of maps with vesting rights, that map comes with the right to, to record it with the fees that were in place the day that the map was approved. It also locks in the design standards, so that if the city comes along at a later date and says, "Well, we want block walls all around the community," well, if that standard wasn't in place when the map was approved, then you can go, you can develop the map with the old standard. So vesting maps are, are a significant, they're a significant asset. If you're, now, the reason I've never cared about vesting in Ridgecrest is because your traffic impact fees and your development fees have pretty much just kept pace with inflation. They haven't, they haven't changed significantly, so I tell developers, when they come here, they go, "Oh, well, we want to get a vested map." And I said, "Well, why? It's going to cost you a lot more money to get the vesting rights, and the city is not really aggressively raising their fees. Their fee structure has stayed pretty consistent over the years." So to me, there, there's really not a significant risk, a fee risk or a design risk in Ridgecrest. And I'm not aware of any vesting tentative maps that have been approved by the, by the Planning Commission. So these maps are still alive, but if, if a developer picks one up and goes in and says, "Okay, I'm ready to move ahead with this map," Lauren Culp has the right to tell him, "Well, you've got to comply with the current standards and the current fee structure that's in place." And actually, to my knowledge, the only thing that's really changed in the last 12 years is that the general plan has this requirement for pocket parks. Now, most of the maps that we took to Planning Commission back then, about half of them had pocket parks. A lot of the developers that I've worked with, they like the idea, because it's an amenity they can put in the middle of the community, it helps them market homes, it adds to the atmosphere of, of the development they're trying to do. The guy that, that owns these two tracks, the one that was approved, the one that was denied, he, he likes them, and he wants to put them in. And I don't think you're going to find that from every developer that comes through here. And frankly, I think the city might want to rethink their policy, because once you get a bunch of pocket parks all over town, they become a hassle to maintain. And I happen to think, I, I've seen these developed in the city of Ridge, I mean, the city of Bakersfield, and they are a mess after you've had a big storm, because you get mud all over everything, and you got to bring in a city crew to clean up all the playground equipment or anything that got flooded, because these parks, these pocket parks that are going to double as sumps are going to fill up with water periodically. And so, but that's my personal opinion, you guys-
That's another issue.
Yeah, that's a whole nother issue. But I, I think that the city should be encouraging the development community and keep these maps alive. It sends a message that says, you know, "We want to see people develop." Eventually, probably most of these maps will expire. They'll go through their extensions, they'll run out of time, and that'll be it. But I'd say the risk that the city has, if, if one of them goes to development, it'll probably come back to the Planning Commission to approve a phasing plan, and then everybody will be happy that it's still around.
Okay. Is there any council questions or comments?
Yes, I've got a couple.
I just wanted to make, so a yes vote is to allow the extension?
It depends on the motion.
Well, okay, because we get into this double negative thing, I don't want to make sure I'm voting for something I don't. Is a yes vote to favor the developer extending this?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, okay. I want to ask the city attorney, because Mr. Whitten made a comment that I'm not sure. He said that if we approve this extension, that we can add conditions when, when the development is actually happening. Is that true, or are we locked into the conditions on the approval?
The code says that you can add conditions when granting an extension, yes.
No, I'm saying if we approve the extension-
Mm-hmm.
-and then they go to develop it in six months.
Oh, then they go to develop it.
Isn't that what you said, we could, we could add-
Yeah, let me clarify, let me clarify that. These maps were not approved with any phasing. And so if a developer comes in and wants to move ahead without phasing the map, let's say it's a big builder and they're willing to do the whole, you know, shoot the whole thing in one whack and build all the improvements, then they can go through and, and move ahead with these maps as they are currently conditioned. The likelihood of that happening, I think, is pretty slim. I think these maps are big enough that there's not a developer in town that would take that risk. I think they'll come back with an amendment, and when the amendment comes through, it's been the custom of the city engineer to add conditions to address the phasing and other issues that he sees on the map. That's what he did with 6679. And so when, that's what I'm saying, is that I would expect these maps to come back to have a phasing plan approved, and at that time, you would have the option to amend the map. Now, if you want to, there's another option here, it would not be my preference, because it means I have to make another trip here from Bakersfield, but you can choose to kick this back to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission can add conditions, because that, with the extension, you can also condition the map. But as I've said, I, that's, that's additional work.
Isn't that why they sent it to us?
No, it was an appeal.
I know it, but you said no.
They denied it.
They denied it.
So he's appealing.
And he's appealing, and it's coming back to us. You'd, because you only had those two options without the phasing.
They could have sent back the stat.
Well, he's, he's right. The, the council can turn around and say, "No, we're not going to make a decision on this. It needs to go back to the Planning Commission, and they need to, you know, hammer this out." But, you know, in that, let me just say this, because we didn't have that map, because it's, it isn't phased, isn't a, you know, a reason to, to not extend it. And so I can't speak for all five, I can speak for me, as the Chair, that I would probably extend it. Now, the caveat to that is, I don't think we want to extend forever. You know, you can extend one year for three years, and this already has 12, but it had a condition given to us by the state. And, and so the direction would need to come from the council. What do you want us to do for the developers? Do you want us to just give them the three years as an automatic thing? Because Daryl's right, you know, we're talking about a tentative tract map, and so when, when they come to actually develop it, there can be conditions on it, there can be phasing, there can be other things that are put there that the Planning Commission isn't looking at at the time of even approving an initial tentative tract map. So I, I would recommend maybe you approve these extension, but give the Commission Council what you would like to do for future maps that will be coming. Do we automatically give them the three years and then let them wash out? Do we automatically give them the three years and then let them wash out, as the email kind of read, those that aren't going to? I mean, truth of the matter is, we'd like them to build. We have the commander on base that says we have a housing shortage, but yet nobody's developing the ground fast enough for us to get the homes built. And so we'd like them to build rather than have 12 more years or three more years of them sitting stagnant. But for me and the Planning Commission, I would say probably extend it rather than send it back.
Are we tying up by not granting the extension or by granting it, and then they don't take action? Can someone else come in and... Or is it tied up for that period?
It's still their land. He explained that. What it does is, it creates an additional cost to the developer because then he has to go back and do the studies. All we're doing is extending the initial work that has been done to give them an opportunity to develop. And I'm for that, but not an open-ended...
But we're going to do three ones, right?
Three ones.
Yeah. That isn't open-ended. Do you see that as...
That is not open-ended, but we also... We have to look that they've already had 12 years to perform.
It's been a tough 12.
And it's been a tough 12 years. And so that's why I said it would be nice if you said, "No, we're going to approve the appeal," which allows them the extension, and give the Planning Commission direction.
I guess my direction would be more to staff than Planning Commission. I would hope in the future that these tentative maps coming up for renewal that were 12 years old, that maybe we add some conditions and bring them up to date, rather than just approve them as a 2006 map. I had a 2006 map, so I like the conditions that were on that. But I agree, it's been a bad 12 years. I'm just finishing up a 24-lot subdivision I started 12 years ago. I guess I'd rather see this thing phased. I guess you can apply for a phasing, and then we could add more conditions. Is that correct?
Yes. But if all we're doing is an extension, we either approve or deny an extension.
I understand that.
Okay.
And I guess I wouldn't have a problem approving this tonight for a one-year extension, but I would like to see staff, when these others come up for extension, that we bring them up to date on requirements.
When it comes to extensions, the city code does permit for adding conditions to extensions, but case law, you read the Subdivision Map Act, suggests that it's... Unless it's the mutual consent of the Planning Commission and the developer, that it's probably best that we avoid that unless we trigger some potential legal complications down the line. So in practice, we would recommend just an up or down vote on any extension, and amendments would open up the possibility of adding conditions to bring the maps in line with current standards.
So, Councilman Maurer?
I think the city attorney wants to make-
Well, just... Okay, I'm not familiar with the case, but let's just look at it this way. It's a discretionary grant of extension. So that suggests that there's an opportunity to add a condition. What I'm curious about is what kind of conditions are we talking about? Because as Mr. Witten correctly pointed out, the map is not locked in with the design standards, the development standards, or the fees from when they were approved. So maybe the council should talk about what we're talking about, what type of conditions we might... The council might consider adding.
But then we are going to have to take each map that's going to go out of compliance, out of timeframe, and deal with it. And I think they all should not be dealt as one, but each one looked at. If that's the case, that's the Planning Commission to come back to-
That should come back to the Planning Commission.
That's right. Come back to us if there's an appeal. But otherwise, it should be the Planning Commission's job. Am I not understanding that correctly?
I'd say the city council has the power.
They have the power, yes.
Because the choice to extend is now before the city council.
Right, we understand that.
We got that, but in the... I'm sorry, Mike, I interrupted you.
Go ahead. So that our choice tonight is either to extend it or deny it as is. Are you saying we can't? Number one, I'm not about to go through and say, "I want to add this and this and this requirement."
Exactly.
I think that should be staff's responsibility when it comes to the Planning Commission.
So it's more of a practical issue than a legal issue?
And, you know, I'll give you an example. There was a tentative track map before the city, a few years ago, next door to my track map, and my realtor turned to me and says, "They are sure being a lot more strict on them than they were on you." So things have changed. Engineering requirements have changed in the last 12 years. And so I would not be in favor of just keeping on adding extensions under the same terms as a 2006.
Mr. Maurer, from what I understand, is that if they go to develop the properties, at that point in time, conditions can be placed on.
Is that true?
It's not a vested map, so I think having a policy that every extension adds conditions, you're now going to have staff time that has to go to that, all the back and forth that goes through it, just to extend a map that may never be developed. But if it is developed, we can bring it back. Staff time is precious, and this adds a cost.
I understand that, but we're using staff time because of the appeal, so...
Well, can I give you an example of one thing? The biggest change that I've seen in town since Joe Pollock was no longer city engineer is that the... Well, we had changed the city engineer, and we had a flood. And when the flood hit, it woke people up to the fact that tracks had been approved for years without any onsite detention or retention of stormwater. And so from that point forward, the new maps that came after that have detention requirements. Well, if somebody walks in today with one of these old maps... Let's say they walk... You know, I walk in with this map right here, and it doesn't have a sump on it. Lauren can make it have a sump because the city drainage standards say that all track maps have to be done in accordance with the city drainage policy. And even if the tentative map was approved without a designated sump, the city engineer can still say, "You're not allowed to dump your stormwater directly into the street. It's got to be detained on site." And so then, we're going through that. And I'm doing another map in town that is a really old map, and we are having to put in stormwater facilities on that map that were not originally a part of the original approval. The concept of a combination sump with a park is something that would be rather more contentious. But with respect to this map right here, can I offer a suggestion? I'd request that the city council approve the appeal and approve the extension. It's a one-year extension. A year from now, I'm going to be back in front of the Planning Commission, asking for the same thing. And if the Planning Commission wants to put conditions on this map at that time, they'll have the opportunity to do it. And in the meantime, the Planning Commission, you guys can put your heads together with city engineer and see how you want to handle these things. But I think most of the concerns can be handled at the staff level for these maps as they're extended. Or you can come up with some basic boilerplate conditions and say, "Okay, you want to extend your map? You've got to meet these extra 10 conditions, and let's move them through." That would be my suggestion.
Well, I disagree with you on one thing, and that's the different parks around... I've got a daughter and grandchildren that live in Arizona, and every one of their subdivisions has sump parks, and they're very well maintained. They probably are maintained by the subdivision rather than the city. And they serve a purpose.
Yeah.
I motion approval of the appeal.
Do we want to hear from any public? This is a public hearing, I think.
Oh, early.
I was at the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority or Agency meeting, I think it was last week or something like that. And I believe it was Mayor Breeden that made the comment that they had had a recent meeting with the Navy, saying that they were going to move in 700 new jobs into our area, and those people would need housing.
300.
Well, the three... I believe-
The net was three.
The net was three.
Net was three.
700 total, net is three.
Net is three. But if only 200 of those 700 or 400 that are being replaced leave, you're going to have to come up with 500 houses, not 300. You can't assume that all 400 people move out. As a matter of fact, I would think we should encourage people to stay, not force them out of their homes so they can make room for employees coming in. So in any event, I believe I heard Mayor Breeden say that the city, not maybe officially, but unofficially said, "We're going to bend over backwards, do everything we can to support the Navy in their mission in getting housing for their employees." Now, do I believe we're going to get 700? Well, I believe that we were going to get 2,500 in BRAC-05, and I was proved terribly wrong, but nonetheless-
Let me address something there, Steve. May I?
Pardon?
May I address what you're saying right there?
Sure, why not?
The difference... Thank you. The difference between BRAC was estimates of divisions or platoons or whatever you want to call them are coming. They didn't come. These are 300 college graduates they're going to be hired, that are hired for June. When they get out of school in June, they will be here looking for places to live. That's the difference.
That would be great, and I would encourage-
No, unfortunately, there's not 300 homes for them to live in.
Yeah, there aren't 300 homes in our town right now. There certainly are not 500. In case some of those people who retire and don't move out, we don't right now have the housing. And so I think it would be bad press for us to not take the appeal and approve the appeal. Mr. Witten is absolutely right. There is a cost to putting these track maps together, and I know of one in particular that cost a hell of a lot more than $50,000, but that's a different story. I think a lot of these track maps were put in place because of BRAC-05. The developer... It was not their fault that BRAC-05 was a bust. It wasn't not their fault that our economy went into the pits. And I think we should do everything we can to encourage development and building of And just a side comment on the pocket parks. My belief is the pocket parks are here because our city has totally failed in its responsibility to work storm drains. And what we need to do is, instead of having pocket parks all over the place, is to have a decent stormwater system. But bottom line is, I suggest that you accept the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
This is Council Mike Neal. So for reasons just stated by Mr. Rittora and stated by Mr. Witten in his final statements before you, I would think that would be enough for you to go ahead and decide to approve this extension of the tentative track map on a governmental philosophy basis. When I ran for mayor a while back, my position on this type of thing was, I want to make Ridgecrest open for business. I want to get the government out of your way and get the fees as low as possible so that business will come to town all of its own because they like coming to Ridgecrest. Well, if you want these guys to come to Ridgecrest, they've got the stuff... You know, it's all done, and they're just simply coming to you saying, "Give us another year." And they've already told you all, you know, current planning standards and everything else have to be complied with, and they don't want to go back and have to incur all these other costs, or they denied this. So there's just simply not a reason other than, you know, discouraging business to come into town, discouraging housing to come into town, not to approve this.
Thank you. I think you'll hear tomorrow Mrs. Johnson address some of these issues that you guys have talked about, and it'll be very interesting, as well as some of our comments. So is there any other public comment? Is there any other council comment? And a motion?
So I already put my motion before-
I'll second the motion. So we're motioning to approve the extension, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Maurer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, sir, you have your answer. Okay, the next item is committee reports. City Org.
Mike?
Sorry.
Oh, sorry. I'm discussing something over here. City Org. Yes, we did meet, and we had two items. Number one, because of a conflict, we voted to change City Org from the... Was it second Tuesday? To the first Monday of each month at 5:00 p.m., and that passed unanimously by the committee. The second item was presented by the police chief. It was a no-smoking ordinance for parks. We had a lot of discussion on that and decided that the current ordinance allows people to smoke within so many feet of playground equipment, things like that, and with the winds we have, that can drift if they're upwind. So we are going... There will be an item presented to the council in the near future to ban smoking in all public park areas, so...
All kinds of smoking.
All kinds of smoking. And I'd like to throw chewing in that, but I don't think chewing was a part of it. To me, chewing is a filthier habit than smoking, but that's because I get people going through the store and spitting it on the shelves, so...
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyway, that's what we... Those are the only two items we have in City Org.
Okay, finance.
It's ringing. Yeah. We meet next Monday.
There it goes, it's gone.
Finance meets next Monday.
Next Monday.
Okay.
Infrastructure Thursday.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Parks and Rec and quality of life.
We have not met since the last council meeting.
Youth Advisory has not met because it's... Oh, yes.
Yeah.
You have.
I'm under the impression, Madam Mayor and Council, that they have met, and they have... We have made some adjustments in staff, some replacements in new assignments of people, so we're going to see the direction that they are headed in under the new direction of the new president.
Okay. All right, inaction is only September and March.
We meet next month.
Okay. RACDB have a report?
Eddie, you want to go in?
Mr. Wallace, you were on the panel.
Okay, just a quick update. So Ramon is working on a new website, which will be introduced shortly. It's being reviewed by the directors. It's going to be an interface that you go to, and from there, you will go to the city and the chamber and other points unknown. So we saw a very brief mock-up, but not much details yet. They're working on a Petroglyph City Art Tour map. They are refreshing their billboards on Highway 14 and 395, which is shared with the chamber. They're going to... The RACDB is joining forces with Eric Valdez of Death Valley, with the Furnace Creek, and Alecia Venos of Mammoth Lakes, Mono County Tourism, to jointly promote tourism for our region. February 24th and 25th, they'll be attending the L.A. Travel and Adventure Show held at the L.A. Convention Center. They will have a booth side-by-side with Kern Company, and Laura Knowles of Kern will be attending as well. March 15th and 16th, Doug will be attending the Flix Film Liaison and California Statewide Directors Meeting. And June 28th through July the 2nd, the Moving Wall, a half-sized replica of the Vietnam Veterans Wall, will be... Directors Meeting. And June 28th through July the 2nd, the moving wall, a half-sized replica of the Vietnam Veterans Wall, will be in Washington, opening ceremonies in June 2018 at Freedom Park, 6:00 p.m. And for information, you can call Carol Coy. Filming for the month of December, there was three productions. Indian Kern Airport, one production. Total community spend for December 2017 was, 2017, what am I reading? 701,000. And the next meeting is coming up on the March 14th. So, that's it.
Okay. Other boards, committees, or commissions, anyone has to report?
Economic Development did meet.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
That's okay. And we talked about, we have been discussing if the city should do a website. We are waiting to see the RACBB website before we decide what to do. And then, we also talked about the upcoming ICSC show in Las Vegas in May, and our plans for that, so that's it.
I have a quick League of Cities report. The, we were, this is at Apple Valley, and they did a very lengthy report. Several years ago, many different agencies were involved with managing the Mojave Desert lands. They were conducting a conservation plan, dealing with public and private lands, but the effort failed because two of the federal agencies had different approaches, and San Berdoo funding ran out, so it didn't materialize. But a lot of issues with endangered species, very rigorous requirements were stopping practically all development, it's getting to be too costly. So, they've been reworking this whole thing for the past few years on fixing this so that certain areas could develop around Victorville and this area. But today, they have a new plan, much better cooperation between all three agencies, and people are working along, seem to be on the same path. So, anyway, how does this affect Ridgecrest and Kern County? Because if they get all the tough issues worked out, they'll have a plan that might operate as a nice template and a model, because it's pro-development and pro-growth within all the limitations they have to deal with. So, they've been fighting this for many years. So, anyway, they're working out a lot of the kinks, so should we have to, the county or the city should have to deal with that in the future. Hopefully, they'll have a model. So, that's the report on that.
Any others?
I have Kern Cog. Generally, Kern Cog's pretty much a rubber stamp for different things coming for us. They do give us out some information occasionally, and this last Thursday, they gave us out a, it's called "Traffic's Mind-Boggling Economic Toll." It says, "In the U.S. alone, congestion cost $305 billion last year, an increase of $10 billion from the previous year." That's the big, bad takeaway from the largest-ever study of global vehicular traffic by the transportation consulting firm, i.e. RIX. And they list the 25 most congested cities in the United States. Out of 25 most congested cities, six of them are in California. Number one on the list, and in California, is Los Angeles. Number three is San Francisco. Number 13 is San Diego. Number 19 is Santa Cruz. Number 22 is San Rafael. And number 24 is Santa Barbara. And just an interesting side note to that, it says, "Los Angeles drivers lead the way, spending an average of 102 hours sitting in traffic every year." 102 hours in traffic every year in Los Angeles, which costs the city more than $19 billion annually, with each driver kicking in $2,828 a pop. But total costs associated with traffic are higher in New York City, where the burden adds up to $33.7 billion. And then, it mentions the other cities. So, there's a lot of productivity loss because they're just sitting in traffic. That's why I live here, not LA.
Okay, any others? Okay, then we come to the city manager's report.
I have no report this evening.
Okay, future agenda items? Anybody?
We got that no-smoking thing, but I'm not sure exactly.
We're not quite ready to come back.
That's already actually being discussed and on a future agenda, pending attorney review.
Depending on how long that takes.
Yeah, you know those attorneys.
Well, we know them, huh? Okay.
See, you shouldn't be talking, we're talking about you.
We're talking about you over there, Lloyd.
So, there's no other future agenda?
Oh, shielding our city.
Okay.
What were you shielding him from?
All right.
Just curious. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, Mayor and Council comments.
I have one. So, this past Friday, a bill, AB 2756, was introduced. And as it stands right now, it aims to require a minimum of one annual fire inspection for any families who file a private school offer David to homeschool in California. And we have a number of homeschooling families here in the city. And this bill really infringes on our Fourth and Fourteenth Amendment rights. You're allowing a fire marshal to come into your home at least once a year to inspect it. And this all came about because of that horrible case of the 13 children, the Turpens. I don't know if I'm saying that right. But basically, this is only aimed at families who have, they look at the private school offer David, and if you have an enrollment of five or less, that's how they know you're homeschooling, and so they're only aiming to inspect those homes. So, that family wouldn't even have qualified for an inspection. As well as, when the fire marshal comes into your home, he can then suggest improvements that you have to make to your home for fire safety. So, no one else has to allow their homes to be inspected in this manner. And so, and this is also another unfunded mandate, which would require a lot of the fire marshal's time to do all of the inspections at least once a year for all homeschooling families in the state. So, I'd like to encourage, I don't know if the council would, but any members of the city to send notes to our representatives to not support this bill, so.
Maybe we could see if we want to take a stand as a committee and then make recommendations.
I personally, obviously, I'm a homeschooling mom, so I'm not for this bill, but I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention because I don't think a lot of people know that it's happening, so.
So, this is, this is not, this is just for, you're not, for everybody? Just homeschool? It's not just if you have a business or you're, just everybody?
Just homeschooling.
Homeschool, period?
Homeschooling families.
Come to your house and do a full inspection?
Yes.
For you homeschooling your own children?
Yes.
Oh, for heaven's sake.
And who does that?
The fire marshal will be required to go.
Why would the fire marshal?
At a minimum of once a year, so it could be more than that.
Well, I'd be glad to sign whatever against that if you want to get it going.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, so I'd like to, in this world of all the bad news every night on almost every channel, I'd like to launch a Good News Minute here at the council. I think we've got too much bad news in our lives every single day. We need some good news. And anyway, so start off with, you know, I'd like to report on the state of the county, which is a couple of weeks back, but I attended, and so did Peggy and Mike, and a couple of notes from my, that was really impressive takeaways. So, the first Good News Minute is dealing with the state of the county. Kern County has become the highest-valued agricultural producer in the United States. This happened at the end of FY '17. Kern ag output now stands at $7.19 billion. Tulare is 6.37, Fresno is 6.18. We have a huge percentage increase in the value of Kern's pistachio and cherry crops that help with the county's overall increase. We have, Kern has maintained its position as the number-one oil-producing county in the nation. It's fantastic. And we now have the largest wind and solar farms in the nation. So, Supervisor Mike Maggert mentioned the new Behavioral Health Crisis Stabilization Unit in Ridgecrest, with a designated mental health facility now in place in East Kern. Adults with mental health issues can receive proper care they need, instead of being treated in an ER somewhere, or even facing the possibility of incarceration. Fantastic notes. So, Supervisor Maggert reported on updates in public safety, including using a federal grant to expand the use of body cameras to all sheriff's deputies in the metro Bakersfield area. By providing an audiovisual record, body cams increase transparency in law enforcement, they reduce citizen complaints, and they provide a great way to review field situation and trains officers. So, this is, in my opinion, some fantastic news. So, that will be the first official Good News Minute that I have dealing with Kern County. So, that's the first one. Now, if you'll indulge me for one other second, I have one second Good News issue. It's not quite as totally happy, and, because here's the deal. You know, sometimes, good news is about stopping bad news, right? Sometimes, good news is about stopping some bad news. So, that's what this story is about. So, the good news is that as a city council and as a county, we recently stopped some bad news by, you know, we banned all cultivation and marijuana sales. Now, I know that we have some pro-pot advocates that say that that's not good news, but tonight, I would beg to differ, and here's why. So, here's a little report here that is kind of an eye-opener. California City was the first city in Kern County to permit commercial cultivation of marijuana. The city estimated pot would boost their general fund between $2 to $3 million, and the first business would be operational in 2018. And at the League of Cities meeting, we have enjoyed commentary from Cal City several times, touting and boosting how fantastic the whole pot industry is going to be for their proud city. And once or twice, I wanted to tap them on the shoulder and say, "Well, there's many of us, sir, who totally disagree, but okay." Here's the deal, as I predicted, things ain't working out quite so well for them. Over the past six to eight weeks, Cal City Police have raided 35 residents, arrested 10 residents, who are all Madeiran or Cantonese and appear to be from the New York area. Organized crime is suspected. They've seized four tons of marijuana, seized numerous lights and ballots and chemicals, 12 grand in U.S. currency sealed, felony vandalism charges are filed left and right, and they are completely wrecking rental units. The growers damaged many of the properties to such an extreme, the houses had to be red-tagged. The illegal growhouses have caused such a burden, now listen to this, this is police reports, incidentally, not from the Inquirer. The Cal City Police Department has requested mutual aid from other agencies in Kern County. The large amounts of chemicals they've located at the growhouses have put a burden on the Kern County hazmat team. They're using insecticides and fertilizers that are banned in the United States. Officers have to wear masks and protective suits to go into these houses. And to make hazmat matters worse, Kern County Environmental Health Department can't help because of expenses the police chief says now they won't even show up. The Taff Midway Driller says, "The chief of police, Ed Whiting, describes it as total chaos. It's literally out of control here," he said. This is a police tip. People wanting to pay the fees and grow it with permits have started applying, but so have all the illegal folks. It's the illegal ones that are causing the trouble. Quote, "It looks like a lot of human smuggling," he said. It's so bad, police have now asked for federal law enforcement help. Whiting said he was told the city has received $1.2 million in permit fees for legal grows, but has spent $900,000 on consultants today. In the meantime, the police budget is being taxed by all the costs associated with the bust. Four-seat trains have been rented to hold all the seized pot and other evidence. Overtime costs are soaring. So, the good news for Ridgecrest, the fantastic news for Ridgecrest, is that our town and our county has said no to pot. And anyway, I'll keep everybody up to date with the Good News Minute at the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Eddie?
You got a pot story?
Stop that one.
No, I don't have a pot story. That was a long time ago.
I'm not going to touch that one.
I haven't always been a preacher.
Where's Brenda when we need her?
Madam Mayor and Council, I just had two things, and it's in reference to Black History on tomorrow night at 6:30 at the college. They're going to be showing a movie called Loving, starring Richard and Mildred in a loving relationship of interracial marriage back in 1960 in Virginia. So, that's, I do believe it's free admission, they just would like to have people come and get together and learn each other in their different ethnicities. And the other thing is, at Victory Baptist Church on Sunday at 10:15, we will also have a service for Black History Month and observing that month. And the last thing is, is to tell Mr. My Date, Mr. My Date, that I'm sorry I missed, but if you give me another opportunity, I promise that we can make it up. Mr. Matthews, thank you.
Wow, that's, that follows mine. Mike?
Nothing.
Okay. Then, with no other public comments or anything, we will adjourn. Thank you.